Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming at this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. At this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Reverend Johnny Drake, pastor of New St. Thomas Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend, how are you, sir?
Doing great. Praise the Lord. Let us pray. O Heavenly Father, here we are once again in your presence, standing before this council of elders and state men and state women. We're seeking your face, Heavenly Father, for it's unto thee, O Lord, that we lift up our soul. For you are our light and our salvation. You are the strength of our life. So of whom shall we be afraid? Plead our cause, O Lord, with those that strive against us. Take hold of shield and buckler and stand up for our help. Sometimes, Father, we feel so far away from you. So we call on your name, but it seems as if we can't formulate the words of our hearts or the cry of our intentions. Help us, Lord, to draw nigh unto thee. You said, "Lord, that whosoever puteth their trust in the Lord will be saved." You said, "If God before us, who can be against us?" You said, "When we press through the waters, you would be with us." You said, "When we press through the river, it shall not overflow us." You said, "When we pass through the fire, we shall not be burned, neither will any flame kindle upon our flesh." So, Lord, create in us a clean heart and renew a right spirit in us that we might learn to agree to disagree without being disagreeable, that we might recognize the worth in every proposal, whether it's worthwhile or worthless, and then decide its value based on the needs of this city and your great people. For we have not only given them our vote, but our strength. So let them turn their ear to wisdom and their heart to understanding. Then, Lord, we ask that you bless them, and they will be blessed; prosper them, and they will prosper. For it's in the precious name of Jesus the Christ that we pray, the one who is able to supply all of our needs according to his riches and glory. It's in his name that we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Reverend Drake. I see you have a young lady here. I see you brought your daughter. You want to introduce her?
That's my sister Leah Stiff.
Oh, is that Ms. Stiff? I didn't know you, Ms. Stiff. It is good to see you. Well, thank you very much. Members of City Council, please indicate your presence electronically.
Seven members of City Council are present.
Members of City Council, you have before your consideration minutes of a call meeting of July the 10th, 2012, a regular meeting of July the 10th, 2012. Are there any corrections?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Okay. Let me, first of all, recognize, we've got a couple of distinguished guests here with us tonight. First, Honorable Johnny Morrison, Judge of Circuit Court. How are you, Judge? It's a pleasure to have you here. And we also have the President and CEO of HRT with us, Mr. William Harrell. Mr. President, good to see you, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody else here?
All right, Madam Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will notice a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of four, at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here at beep, and we ask that you conclude your remarks at that time. Unfinished business, consent agenda. 12-282, rezoning code amendment and use permit applications. Item A, ordinance granting the request of Melissa Venable, agent for Victory Crossing Two, for a zoning map amendment to amend the previously proffered concept plan and related maps and the previously proffered design guidelines for Victory Village. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Z1201. First reading vote, seven zero. See, ordinance granting the request of Melissa Venable, agent for Victory Crossing Two, a zoning text amendment to change the text of Section 40.1-3.5 of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 40.1 of the city code, so as to provide a modification to the approval process for changes to development plans within the MX EMP zoning district. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. CA1202. First reading vote, seven zero. Item D, resolution granting the request of J. Gregory Dodd of Horton &amp; Dodd, agent for Chick-fil-A, on property owned by Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation. Request a use permit to develop a restaurant with a drive-through. The property is located at 901 Frederick Boulevard, 3113 South Street, and 1614 Hamilton Avenue. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. UP1204. First reading vote, seven zero. Item E, resolution granting the request of J. Gregory Dodd of Horton &amp; Dodd, agent for Chick-fil-A, on property owned by Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation, for a use permit to develop a restaurant with parking in excess of 175 percent, maximum allowed by ordinance. The property is located at 901 Frederick Boulevard, 3113 South Street, and 1614 Hamilton Avenue. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. UP1205. First reading vote, seven zero. Item F, ordinance granting the request of the City of Portsmouth proposing technical amendment, code amendments to the provisions of the city zoning ordinance, Chapter 40.1 of the city code, including, but not limited to, modifications to regulations to allow ground-floor apartments in certain areas of the UP, excuse me, the Uptown D2 district. Vision principle: A change and new directions. CA1201. First reading vote, seven zero. Final adoption by electronic roll call, and we have no registered speakers.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. City Managers' Report, 12-300, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $532,829 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2012/13 Grants Fund for probation and pre-trial services in the City of Portsmouth. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and a sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-301, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $182,500 from the Office of the Executive Secretary of the Supreme Court of Virginia and appropriating said amount in the FY 12/13 Grants Fund for use by the Circuit Court for the City of Portsmouth Adult Drug Court, Drug Treatment Court. Vision principle: Neighborhoods and a sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-302, adoption of an ordinance to repeal Sections 22-267, 268, and 268.1 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia pertaining to the issuance of hauling permits for the transport of seagoing containers, concrete mixer vehicles, and vehicles hauling excavated material. Vision principles: Change and new direction and neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Okay.
This item is adopted seven zero. 12-303, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles for the issuance of certain overweight vehicle permits on behalf of the City of Portsmouth. Vision principles: Change and new direction and neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 12-304, adoption of a resolution commending Hampton Roads Transit for its support of OpSail 2012. Vision principle: Quality of life. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Let me, if I could, Mr. Manager, would you give us a brief summary or get the President up to give us a brief summary of the OpSail event and the great work that you did? Can we take a couple of minutes to do that, sir?
No, that is fine, Mr. Mayor. I'll yield first to the President and CEO of HRT. Ms. Harrell.
Great to have you here, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Mr. Chandler, certainly our pleasure to be before you. We're very proud of what was accomplished, and we certainly want to thank the Portsmouth City Council for your recognition. It certainly was quite a weekend with OpSail, all of the planning that went in place and coordination with your staff as well as our neighboring communities. What we're very proud of is that we set several records during the course of that weekend to include the ferry service with 32,209 riders, light rail 46,764 over the course of that weekend. The coordination included operations, communications. We had tide guides, volunteers out to help deal with customers. We provided water for those during the event. So it was quite a strong effort of the agency. So we certainly appreciate your cooperation and recognition.
Thank you very much for that. And let me just add, and the Vice Mayor and I are commissioners for HRT, and I'm sure I speak for both of us when I say what a great job you're doing as President. You hit the ground running. There are a lot of challenges with this agency, and I feel extremely comfortable with your leadership and the way you're being able to demonstrate how to incorporate all of the commissioners and all the things that we have and the tasks that we have. So welcome aboard. Thank you for coming here to Portsmouth, and keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you got anything?
I was just impressed with the way, about the primary vehicle, which was light rail. It was a secondary movement of people from Portsmouth to Norfolk, Virginia Beach to Norfolk. You did such a good job. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second. You will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. New Business, 12-305, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mayor, members of council. The Personnel Committee would like to submit the following appointment and reappointment recommendations for your approval. Reappointments, first, History Commission, Gregory Etroff. PRHA, Brian Johnson. Community Criminal Justice Board, the Honorable Johnny Morrison. William Rucker. Brenda Spray. History Commission, Michael Conlow. Library Board, Herbert Mott. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Dante Owens. Social Services Advisory Commission, Angela Hicks. Wetlands Board, Marcella Thomas.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second. You will be voting electronically.
Okay. Very good.
This item is adopted seven zero. 12-306, items submitted by council members.
Thank you. Let me, I've got a couple of items. Let me, first of all, I want to recognize the 25th anniversary of our clerk. She has been with this city and doing a fine job for 25 years, and I think it's Marvin Sepp that sung this song, "Never Would Have Made It." And I got to tell you, in my two years here as mayor, I never would have made it without the boss here. So let's, absolutely. Absolutely. Secondly, let me say, last Friday, we all know, we had the grand opening of our new judicial center here in Portsmouth, which was fantastic. First class, well done, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Oaksman, and all that played a role in making this day possible, from our construction workers all the way to the designers and planners. I was thoroughly impressed. We had an open house on Thursday where we invited all of the judicial community from around the, actually, the Commonwealth, and it was well attended, and we received extremely positive comments about the court and the layout and the whole piece. So very excited about that. But also, just prior to the grand opening, we also had a special citizen that was recognized here in the City of Portsmouth, Ms. Martha Ann Creasy. We had a ceremony at 10 o'clock down at the end of Denwood, where they planted a tree in her honor and recognized her for the great work that she did as a noble citizen of this great city and all of the different causes, whether you agree with her or not, she was there. And I have a poem here, and I would like to take two seconds to read this. It was written by Ms. Virginia Merton, who is a resident of West Parkview, and 31 years she spent at Department of Social Services, and it's called "The Creasy Tree: An Ode to Martha Ann." This tree is planted where the river meets the land, an honor, respect, and devotion for Martha Ann. May it flourish with her tenacity and drive as a symbol of her efforts to help Portsmouth survive. Her service and loyalty are well-known by all, and advocate for causes, her enthusiasm never stalled. A variety of interests and vocally protected, standing for her beliefs, she was nearly elected. To serve her city and make us aware, there was never a day that she failed to care. Her contributions will live longer than her tree, and we salute her and rejoice that she is free. This gathering is a testimony to Martha Ann's life and love, and we feel her influence smiling down us from above. Again, this was written by Virginia Merton, and it was well done. We had quite a few people, yes. It was great to see most of our Civic League leaders there and all of the people that had came in contact with her. I see Ms. Danaher was there and several of the people that were out, Mr. Joe Wright, Mark, Ms. Radenauer. It was, it was well done, and thank you to the Parkview, West Parkview Civic League and all that played a part in that. Again, it does your heart well as mayor to go around and see people that have made their footprint on this community and stated what they liked and didn't like and stood by it. So again, I want to say thank you for you all that did that, and hopefully we'll have some comments later about that. Okay, anyone else with any comments? Any other items submitted by council? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 12-307, report on pending items, and we have none this evening.
Very good.
12-308, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Joe Wright, and he's followed by Sheriff Bill Watson.
Honorable Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, City Council members, Mr. Manager, City Attorney, Good Sergeant at Arms, Deborah White and her staff, good evening. My name is Joseph R. Wright, 1451 Welcome Road in the Cavalier Manor section of Portsmouth, Virginia. I have several items tonight that I'd like to bring to your attention, and first and foremost would be the Cavalier Manor Swimming Pool. As you all know, this is the only city-owned public swimming pool in the city. Here we go again. They'll talk that this might be the last year. That would make us very unhappy in Cavalier Manor. So we would ask you, on the next budget cycle, to include that in your budget. The next item I would like to address would be the new splash park down on Elm Avenue next to a neighborhood facility. I understand that this facility, or this splash park, or whatever you want to call it, didn't cost the city anything. It was given to the city by a grant from PRHA, Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority. The water that's used is recyclable. I think it's ridiculous that you would charge a kid $2 to come in and stand under the shower. And it just works a hardship for mothers and fathers that have more than one child that want to send their kid to have a little fun in the summertime. And I think there should be some adjustment made by the city to lower the rate so we can get better attendance and more people will be able to enjoy the swimming to the splash park. The next item on my agenda, some of it might have been addressed in the work session today, so I understand, about the grass cutting. As you all know, I live in Cavalier Manor, and it seems like, you know, the number 40 has always been a magic number in Cavalier Manor, especially along Greenwood Drive and Cavalier Boulevard. You know, they were the two main ditches in Cavalier Manor, and it took us 40 years to get those ditches closed. Those same two streets, the medium strips that, when the streets were closed, they built medium strips, and the grass, you know, is just about knee-high. I was pleased to learn that the city addressed that tonight. In fact, this evening, I saw someone out there with a riding mower trying to cut the grass, but the rain overtook him. The final item that I'd like to bring up is the overgrowth along Rotunda Avenue beside the interstate. V-Doc claims that it's not their property, and the City of Portsmouth claims it's not their property. You can't call this grass anymore. This is, this overgrowth there is so large, you could probably lose a small child in that area, and, you know, all kinds of wildlife, you know, is in and out of there. It was even suggested by the sheriff that since no one wants to claim it, if someone would sign the deed over to him, he would take care of that property. And I think that would be a good idea unless somebody wants to come forward and claim that property. This is all of my concerns, and I would like to know if you have any questions or any comments. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Wright, thank you very much, and you're correct. Both of those issues were addressed in our work session about an hour ago, and actually, the grass cutting on Greenwood Drive started this morning, and hopefully, well, the rain knocked them off.
Right, yeah.
It can get that taken care of, and I think Dr. Edmonds brought up as a concern the overgrowth on Rotunda.
Okay.
The manager has the action, and we'll take care of that, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your concerns.
Okay.
Okay, Councilman Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to address Mr. Wright on the, on the swimming pool. You know, before I was elected to council, the pool was slated to close, and that's what you were referring to other, earlier. And we got that fixed and got it straight. And last budget session, I made a statement sitting right here that, you know, when we talked about the budget cuts, that I wanted to know what, what they meant, because I didn't want to find out that the Cavalier Manor pool was closing when you came to the mic to tell me.
Right.
And here we are.
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask my colleagues to join in with me to say, because if you read the papers the last two weeks, you have been, there's articles in the paper about disparity and drownings and swimming amongst minority and African-American kids. It's latest this week in the paper. So I want to ask my colleagues if they could join with me to direct the manager to do whatever we can to make sure that the Cavalier Manor pool stays open, not just because it's the only pool in the city, but it is a pool, it's more than just a pool for that community. It's an icon, a centerpiece of that community, and it has been for many years. And with what's happening with our minority kids and the disparity in being able to swim and drowning, it would be a shame for a city as adverse as ours to let such a facility close. So I, for one, am stating right here today that we need to do whatever we can to find the nickels and dimes to make sure that that pool stays open.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor Wright. Mr. Wright, thanks for being here. The other items that you touched base on was the splash park, I believe, and you correctly said that it was built at no cost to the city with grant money. With that said, that was addressed in the public work session, and I want this to be part of the minutes, too. We are charging kids to go there. Unfortunately, we're charging kids as young as five months the full price, and I like for the minutes to show that I've asked for staff to come back with reassessment of that, where kids of a certain age don't pay anything. To charge a five-month-old baby that has to be in a mother's arms is beyond me why we would do that. The other thing that was built with grant money is the Planetarium at the Children's Museum, and that, that fee is $4 for kids. And I know we talked about that, we kicked it around, but I don't believe that was addressed. We need to revisit that as well, and $4, going from zero to $4 is a big increase. So I would like the mayor to see us revisit that and make that fee more equitable to the children who go to the Children's Museum, especially since it was built with grant money at no cost to the city, thanks to the Beasley Foundation. Thanks for reminding us of that.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. And actually, we want to take that item up when we got the data for the next quarterly report from Mr. Gottfried. I think that we initially brought that up with, it was too early and the numbers were just coming in. So we clearly want to be able to address that, and, and again, we discussed this, and I think it should be free, and I think most of us do. But again, let's get that number, and let's have that meeting, and then we'll make that decision. So thank you very much. Ms. Randall.
Thank you so very much. Mr. Wright, I can go back there with you. When you talk about that Cavalier Manor swim pool out there, it was something that we needed to promote that area at that time. And the thing about it was, it was maintained and looked after by the people, the residents of Cavalier Manor. That was part of the original plan, and you're very much aware of it, because you were right out there with us as we moved that. Every resident in that community had an opportunity to go to that pool and work. Unfortunately, we had to charge in the beginning, but then that backed away, and the residents all had a share in that. So when we think in terms of that pool, it was part of the initial plan that was put out there when Cavalier Manor was developed. You know it just like I did, because we all were part of the beginning people that moved out into that community. When it became part of what was going on with the city, the city had an agreement with us to help us in maintaining it. That part was forgotten after all, and then finally picked back up. I think that what we need to do is to hold on to the legacy of what that pool meant for the community, because there was no place else in the city for children of color to swim, and we need to make sure it remain a part, and I would even recommend be part of the historical registry in the city of, community, because if not, it will soon disappear like many other things that came about in the community. And that was set up throughout the state and the United States of America as a model city, and I don't think we need to ever forget that legacy. And I commend you and your family and the And I commend you and your family and the others who worked to bring about that legacy in that community. So keep on keeping on, and don't let the people give up.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. Mr. Whitehurst.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think we're being clear enough. We need to probably have a motion to tell the manager what we want to do with respect to charges for the pool.
No charge.
And with respect to the planetarium. We're leaving it up to him. We need to come up with a clear decision of what we want as a council.
No charge.
All right. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. To the Vice Mayor's point, not going to make a motion, but this can't wait to the next quarterly report. By my count, the next quarter ends in September, and September is usually the end of pool season. And as I said during the work session, we don't have to have a consultant to tell us that five-month-old kids shouldn't be charged the full price to go in a splash pool. So, Mayor, I support that the kids under a certain age should be free. I'm going to leave it up to staff to come back to council, and I would like for that information to come back to us at the next meeting, if there's consensus among my colleagues about to the end of the quarter.
Point of clarification, the end of the quarter was for the numbers from the Children's Museum, so we could make a decision on the planetarium, not for the pool.
Well, I would like the pool issue, the splash park issue, that is, to come back to council by our next meeting.
Okay. The manager has that action, and we should be able to get that done by next meeting. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you. Do the sheriff get Rotunda Avenue?
No.
Somebody's got to do it.
Yes.
We're going to take a look at that as well. Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Following Sheriff Watson is Mr. Clyde Toler.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Bill Watson, Sheriff of Portsmouth. Funny, they were talking about grass just the other day. The mayor called me about a piece of property out there off of the interstate, which is supposed to be VDOT property, but VDOT doesn't claim it when the grass is high. But you try to do something out there, it's VDOT property. It either is or it isn't. But he called me, I get the phone ring, I said, hello, he says, Bill, I said, this is Kenny Wright. I said, hey, Mayor, how you doing? He said, may I know a favor? I was like, what you got? Talk about the property, he said, I know exactly where you're talking about. I said, yeah, we'll get a crew over there, we'll get it cut, and we sent them over there. And we've done it in the past. The problem is, they have contractors that work for VDOT, and the thing is, if we go over there and cut the grass, the contractors get paid for it. So we got to alleviate that problem. Now, you know, the city will write up an 84-year-old woman, or disabled veteran in a wheelchair for their grass being too tall, but nobody's writing up VDOT. They have to adhere to the same laws as everybody else. You give me the ticket book, I'll write them up. I'll take them to court, I'm not afraid of VDOT. For some reason, we're not holding VDOT's nose to the grindstone. What I came here tonight for was, speaking of grass, when Noah Whitehead was fire chief in the City of Portsmouth, we had like a marriage made in heaven over there. We had inmates out there cutting grass on all the fire stations so that the firefighters wouldn't have to get out there in 100-degree heat and cut grass. We didn't charge a dime for this service. We did it as an honor to our heroes, the firefighters. For some reason, the new fire chief says that he doesn't want us on the property, and he will take disciplinary action against any firefighter that allows us out there to cut grass. It's not his property, it belongs to the taxpayers. All fire stations belong to the taxpayers. And we're not charging for this service. I don't see what the big beef is. But I can't see why he should hold any firefighter with any disciplinary action if we come out there to cut grass. We're going to be out there tomorrow morning, we're going to cut it again. Every station that needs grass cutting, we're going to cut it. He said he's going to have us removed? I don't think he has that authority. Now, you have to understand, do you really want a firefighter out there in 100-degree heat, cutting grass, then have to answer a call for service? Somebody has a heart attack, you better hope the paramedic that responds to that wasn't cutting grass 30 minutes ago. If your house is on fire, you better hope that firefighter wasn't the one who was out there cutting grass 30 minutes ago. He might have to go into a burning building to pull you out. He's lucky if he can get himself in and out of there, because he's already suffering from heat exhaustion. I have inmates that are more than happy to do this as a service to our firefighters. Then we built the Seagrave Fire Engine, okay? It's set for 55 years in a warehouse. The city couldn't seem to get it started. So I asked for the fire engine, they gave it to me. An hour and a half, we had it running and was driving it. We completely restored it. It's the oldest operating fire engine in the state of Virginia.
It looks great, too.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. It's been dubbed "The Pearl of Portsmouth." The problem we have is, the fire chief will not let any firefighter drive that fire engine with his uniform on. He has to be off-duty, in plain clothes. We put a lot of time and money into that fire engine, Mayor. We need to quit this stupid bickering, okay? We're not trying to take you over to the fire department, we're just trying to provide a service. Now, you know, I don't know how y'all feel, but I think our firefighters are heroes. I wouldn't run into a burning building on purpose, I'd run out of one. I'd rather get shot than burnt, it's quicker. You know what I'm saying? But the fact remains, these guys and gals do this every day, and all we want to do is provide a service for them. I would like to see somebody to be a champion up there tonight and make a motion and vote on it. Now, the fire chief and the police chief works for the city manager. And if you vote and you say, we want the sheriff to be able to cut the grass out there, the city manager has no choice, the fire chief has no choice. Okay? We serve the public, we serve all people, and firefighters are people. And that's all I'm asking. I'd like to see somebody vote tonight, and let's clear the air so we can go ahead and start cutting this grass again without a bunch of bickering and threats on our firefighters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Let me ask you, had you bothered to bring that to my attention, this issue you're talking about here tonight?
You know, the firefighters-
First I'm hearing of that.
That's the first you've heard of, Mayor, and you know, I've got to give you credit where credit is due. You already get hold of, you stay busy. And I've called and left a couple of messages, but I know you've been up to your eyeballs with this new court building, as I have, and it's a beautiful building. It's like Bangartha Mall, it's huge. And now you see why we needed extra deputies, you know? But like I say, the only reason that it wasn't brought to your attention, because we were both on a tight schedule trying to get last-minute things done. But I would like to go ahead, in fact, at one time, the fire department used to fax us a sheet every day of the different fire hydrants that needed to be painted. Now, I don't know whether y'all are aware, but the fire hydrants have a color code painted on each one of them, which means they have X amount of pounds of nozzle pressure. So this one has to be painted one color at the top, and this one has to be painted another color. They would give us the exact location of the hydrant, they supplied the paint. I had inmates painting all those fire hydrants and trimming the weeds around them and everything, so that they wouldn't get paint on the fire engines, excuse me, and the firefighters wouldn't get paint on their uniforms. We're still willing to provide this service free. Now, the only thing I can find that would be any better is if somebody paid y'all to let them do it. I mean, free is about as good as you get it, you know? And I know each and every one of y'all love and respect our firefighters. I don't think anybody's willing to step up and say, I don't like firefighters. I don't think you're willing to do that, you know what I'm saying? But I think it's just something we should be able to do for them as a service to our city.
Let me ask you one other question. Have you made the manager aware of your issue with the fire department? Have you made the manager aware?
I've mentioned it before.
Since you couldn't get a hold of me?
I've mentioned it.
You've mentioned, okay, thank you. Dr. Edmonds.
I'd just like to reiterate on what the sheriff saw my regards to the grass cutting. We raised the issue in Public Works about who owns that particular property on the fence on Rotunda.
On Rotunda Road, yes, sir.
And because whoever owns it is responsible for it, ultimately. And I think we need to clear that up, who owns it. And at the same time, I also feel that we need to solicit any kind of help we can.
Yes, sir.
That can help us. But I think we need to find out, more importantly, because if somebody owns it, I heard you say that they're getting paid for it.
Yes, sir.
And so who pays them the money to do it is one horse of a different color. But I think it needs to be addressed, because it's getting worse.
Yes, sir.
Not getting any better. And so that was my concern earlier today, to see who owns it. And Mr. Godfrey is on it, because we gave it to him to look into. So hopefully, some way or another, the matter will be corrected, and if we need the help that you're offering, we can count on that as well.
Absolutely. Like I said before, a lot of people know that Bishop and I talk on a regular basis. We've been friends for many years, and I support him 100% in his endeavors for everything. Now, the property out there on Rotunda Road, it's VDOT property, anyway you look at it. But the fact remains is, we're not going to stand here and point fingers at each other who owns what. And I was kidding with Joe, I said, yeah, turn the property over to me, I'll cut it. It was a joke, okay? I'm not asking for the deed to that property, I'm really not. But what I'm telling you is, I'm willing to go out and cut it. You know, the problem is, nobody's asked me. Remember about writing under city codes?
Yes.
And we had a talk one day, and you said, why don't you do it? I said, nobody ever asked me. And you said, I'm asking you now. I pick up the phone, I call my traffic man, says, start writing under city codes. He said, that easy? I said, it was that easy. Nobody ever asked me. I'll tell you what I will do, I'll give y'all a trade-off. If y'all will let us cut the fire stations, I'll keep Rotunda Road cut clean and pretty, regardless of who owns it. Does that work for you?
Thank you, Sheriff. Just one, Mr. Whitehurst.
I hate to do this, but we need to stop this bickering with the sheriff and what he's trying to do. So I want to move that we direct the city manager to come back with a plan to utilize the sheriff's services cutting grass.
I really appreciate it. And I know that our firefighters appreciate it. Any more questions?
No, there's a motion on the floor.
There's no second.
And there's no second. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I don't even think we need a motion for that kind of action. I think if there's a consensus in council, we would have the sheriff get with the manager face-to-face and work out how that can be done. I think that's all we need.
I do, sir. I more than will do that.
I don't think we need a motion for something as simple as that. And I'm sure the manager will certainly take you up on your offer.
I'm hoping.
And I think the citizens would benefit from it, as well as the firefighters.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Edmonds.
First of all, I don't think we're bickering, I think this is good discussion. But I also think that we did discuss this in Public Works, and we did task the manager and Mr. Godfrey to do something. So I don't want us to just disavow what we've already done.
Thank you.
And certainly, we know that the sheriff is going to be there for us to fall back on.
Thank you.
But I think we ought to not just discard what we've already put in motion in the public work session.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, Mr. Cherry, and we need to move on with this matter.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my comments are similar to Mr. Moody's. I think we need a motion to do this, but we need not to put the manager in what I call a precarious position in the fire department, because the fire chief is the chief of all the firefighters, and their well-being is under his discretion. So I think the best thing to do is let the manager and the sheriff talk, and if they come to some agreement, then fine. If not, you know, as long as the grass is getting cut. But I don't want to dictate to the fire chief the management of his personnel from the council.
All right, Ms. Moody.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a point, and Councilman Edmonds is correctly, we did discuss this in public work session. But things we discuss in public work session, there is no public record of it. Minutes aren't taken of those meetings. A lot of times, I'll bring things up at this meeting, because it will be entered into the minutes, and we can refer back to what that request was. I've advocated in the past, and I still advocate it, that we begin keeping minutes at public work sessions, so we know who was tasked with what. Somebody said, yeah, we can look back on TV, but that's not a good way to keep a record. When it's said at this meeting, a minute is logged in our official minutes, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Ms. White, on your anniversary. But thank you all of you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thanks for coming out. All right, Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Clyde Toler, and he's followed by Ms. Juanita Bryant.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of Council, Ms. Oakman, Ms. Chandler, Ms. Whitehead-Stad. Good evening. Clyde Toler, 1029 Blair Street, Parkview. I come tonight before you because on this fire truck, I don't know if the truck is older than me or who the oldest, but anyway, I rode that truck all the way from Craddock all the way back home, and I blew the sirens when I came down my street twice. It's a nice fire truck. But anyway, Sheriff Watson and Lieutenant Lee, they do a lot for this city. And if you had have been at Craddock the 4th of July, the mail that was a great speech you gave, you should have that typed up and then frame it, because I've been to many functions the 4th of July, and this was a very post-showing for the City of Portsmouth for the being Craddock. We got Channel 48. If Channel 3 and 10M can't do it, then bring Channel 48 out. You ain't got nothing on 48, no way, but a bunch of junk. Put something on there that everybody can see, and stop playing the same thing over and over. But it was a great day, there was a great speech.
Thank you.
And another thing I want to bring up, I'm glad I know how to vote. I've been voting for mayor for a long time. Nobody had to tell me, and the citizens of Portsmouth don't need, nobody coming up here telling us, like we're a bunch of idiots and we don't know what to do to a mayor, how to vote. That was wrong, that's embarrassing. We shouldn't come before this council, embarrass the council. You don't embarrass me, I'm not going to embarrass you. If you embarrass me, I'm going to write you a letter and tell you I'm not going to come up here and do it and put it on public. Anyway, when this red light thing come up, don't sit up there and say, we got to talk about it, vote yes, and put the red light cameras out here on the streets, especially at Elm Avenue and London Boulevard, because the light you see with that camera might be your own, you better stop these people running the red light. You spend my money on them signs, so now let's spend the money on something that's good, instead of something that's not good. Okay, when you move, when you make a motion up there and say, move for approval, and second, please speak up so we out here on the floor will know who said, all out here, someone up there said, I move for approval. There's somebody said, second, well, who is saying second? Who's saying move for approval? Speak up, well, we can hear you out here on the floor. That go for you, council. All right, citizen runners for office. Most of the citizen runners for office, they run straight to the churches every time they start running. Headies packed up in the church, they come right in the house to pray and tell a lie. They come right up here, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that, and then come right up here on this couch and do nothing. They lie. Why go in the house to guard the lie? So you shouldn't do that. Anytime you go, anytime voting time come up, and if I had ran for office like some people have and lost poorly, I wouldn't be running no more, because the citizens already spoke, they not said, they don't want you. So why run again? You wasting my time, wasting everybody else's time, and you're not going, well, I can't say you're going to win, but I know I won't go for you. But anyway, but if I ran for office and have lost like some people have, I wouldn't run for office no more. And I would like to praise the council, you're doing a good job. Consider, Mayor, I don't care if they call you a bully, you big enough to be a bully, so go ahead on and be the bully. And sometime, you got to be a bully to keep everybody else in line, because some people won't stay in line. So if you got to be a bully, you big enough to be a bully, be the bully. So anyway, grass cutting over this city, you need to go out there when you come from 664, when you're coming down off the ramp to Frederick Boulevard, look at that grass out there. When my grass get about four inches high, I got a ticket. City got grass all over the place. I want to find out why you don't get no tickets. Somebody need to write up whoever in charge need a ticket. What's happening with your inspectors? They're turning their head to a lot of stuff. As I said one time before, in the summertime, it's too hot to get out the car, and the wintertime is too cold. Inspector got to get out and do the job. I don't want to come up here and put no inspector on, you know, bring them up before the council, but if it got to be necessary, I do it. Okay, London Plaza, you need your inspector to go to London Plaza, this place need to be marked off, there's water when it rains standing about a foot, and it's dirty, I mean dirty. Now, there's a lot of officers go over there at this little Sammy shop and eat. I'm surprised, Mayor, I would like to have two minutes.
You can't have it, sir. Five minutes is five minutes. I will thank you for-
Well, I asked anyway, but anyway, thanks.
Yes, sir. Just for a point of clarification, Sergeant Major, the off-ramps in the area, and we've hit it before, there's a lot of confusion with what is VDOT property and what is the city property. Those are VDOT properties. I actually called the administrator, and VDOT is only going to cut grass three times a year. And they said they do it statewide, three times. So we need to, if something is that important, we, the city, need to cooperate or partner with VDOT and do it ourselves if they're not going to do it but three times a year. But, and that's a lot of what you're seeing and some others are seeing around these off-ramps and these entryways coming into the city. So, and we discussed that also in the work session. But point well taken, and thanks for your comment.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Juanita Bryant, and she's followed by Ms. Terry Danaher.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, and all other councilmen. I am again before you in reference to my driveway. I live in the Prennis Park area. And when they was out there fixing the roads, they, some of those tractors, heavy equipment went up into my driveway and it caused my, I'm not going to lie to you, there might have been one or two cracks, but that heavy equipment made it worse. And now my driveway have completely separated. And I don't want anyone to get hurt on it. And I do need a new driveway. Now, I talked with some of those companies that was out there working, and they all deny that they did not work on Prennis Park or Evergreen Place. Well, I never thought that I would have to go through this. So I don't remember which company was there, but I do have a list of the name of the company. And Mayor Wright, you told me that you was going to look into it, and I haven't heard anything from anyone. And I need my driveway fixed. And I was here in October the 25th of last year. So now I'm back again, hoping that I can get some help from you.
Okay. Ms. Bryant, are you done? I don't want to mess up your time.
Yes.
Okay. I think when we looked into that matter, if I'm correctly, there's quite a bit of correspondence that's gone out to you from the city and with the contractors, if I'm not mistaken. And I think they've made a position and provided that to you.
Yes, that was before I came here.
Yes, ma'am. And then after you came here, I actually went to your house and looked at your driveway myself. You weren't at home. I knocked on the door. That matter was concerning me and I went to that length to do that. And I think if you look at the data that the city has sent, and Mr. Manager, if you wouldn't mind opening that back up again and looking, but I think we looked at that and I thought Ms. Bernadette Hoag was to follow up with you on that. But I saw quite a bit of correspondence that the city has sent you and the contractors pertaining what you just described to us. So we did look into it and I think someone has gotten back with you. But we'll do it again and we'll call you, okay?
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good night. Dr. Edmonds.
I was going to concur with you, Mayor, that we need to revisit that because Ms. Bryant has been here before so that she can get something concrete about what she's doing.
No pun intended, concrete?
No pun intended.
Yes.
She is a very credible woman and I hope that Mr. Manager would be able to do something to give some relief to her concern.
Thank you, sir. All right, good night, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Terry Danaher is followed by our final speaker, Mr. Reginald Ruffin.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Mr. Oakesman, Sergeant Arms, and everyone here leading you up there. Before I get started on what I'm going to talk about, which is actually quite pleasant, I have to say that the argument over the grass of the fire departments is an embarrassment. And the idea of challenging the chief's authority over something like that had me tearing my hair out over there. That's incredible. I can't imagine going to the sheriff's department and challenging his grass cutting of his place or what he has his people do. And I'm just stunned. And thank you, Mr. Cherry, that was really a very reasonable response and I appreciate it as a citizen here. Now, moving on to the fun stuff, we have a lot of events coming up and I think it's important that we know what they are so we can have some fun. Coast Guard City Portsmouth Celebration 2012 will be with us August 1st through 4th, actually, because there's a little surprise that Starboards is having. They're having a birthday cake. They have 222 pieces of birthday cake to give away starting at 6:00 in the morning on August 1st, which is Wednesday. So for those of you who are early risers and who leave the house at 6:00, head on down there and get a free piece of cake and say happy birthday to the Coast Guard. The official activities begin on August 2nd at a slightly more reasonable hour for those of us who are not morning people. At 5:00 until 8:00, we have the Third Annual First Responders Barbecue and Slaw Throwdown. And for anybody who's been to that, it's lots of fun, it's lots of food, it's really a great place to spend a few hours getting to know some of our Coast Guard neighbors because a lot of coasties attend this. Everybody from the enlisted to the admirals come with family and friends. And we have a lot of neighborhood people and a lot of volunteers helping out. We have barbecue and slaw from about 10 teams, which includes Coast Guard teams, Navy, Portsmouth Police Department, and I hope the fire department, if Mike gets his act together back there. Don Horton promised me a team. And we just have a good time. And there'll be music this year by a guitarist, Herb Smith, who is excellent. He's a classical and jazz guitarist.
Don't forget the local restaurants also.
The local restaurants. We have four local restaurants. And this year, we have a new one from George Washington Highway. So it should be a fun, fun thing. And then the second day of the festival, we have on August 3rd, Friday, we have the concert in the courtyard, and that is Robin Thompson again. Last year, that was very popular. We had over 800 people show up. So people were kind of pouring out of the courtyard into the parking lot, into the sidewalk, and it was, it was great. It was a really good time. And that, again, that's free and open to, that's free and open to the public. The barbecue is, tickets are $15 unless you're a first responder, and then in that case, they're $12. The free concert on Friday should be a really good one. There's also food and beverages available there for free. And then on August 4th, we have the All Day Festival, and that is downtown, starts at 10:00. There are rides and family fun. We have the bouncers out there and all kinds of things for people to do. And then we have, for the first time, a concert. The DeLoreans will be here at 4:30, and they'll be from 4:30 to 6:00, 6:30 playing. So it should be a really good day. So everybody come downtown. And now for my, I'm switching hats and I'm hoping that all of you are aware that for the No Tolles HR campaign, we actually made it to court. We got there on July 12th. And I'm happy to say that we filed our lawsuit and we're on our way. We're in court now. It's official. And I have not enjoyed writing a check as much as I enjoyed writing that $84 check to file that case in a very long time. That check was made possible by a lot of donations and many of you have donated and we very much appreciate it. Some of you made additional pledges and we appreciate that, too. We have about $60,000 worth of pledges that we need to cover. So we are still raising funds and we will probably be raising funds for the rest of our lives for this thing. But we have a lot of events coming up and I wanted to talk, we have an event on August 11th. It's a music festival and gallery rally at North Landing, and that will be from noon until 8:00. It's $10. You can donate on the website or you can donate at the door. And here's the website. And I have got very little time left, so I will leave it at that. Thank you all very much. I hope to see you at our events. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much and thank you for what you do. And before you leave, would you like to just make a comment or two about Ms. Martha Ann?
Oh, we really miss Martha Ann, and I especially miss Martha Ann right now because I know that if Martha Ann were alive, she'd be doing this job. And it was a really, really nice ceremony. The Friends of Scotts Creek kind of drove that. Stephanie Love was the person responsible for making that happen.
She did.
And, yeah, I think everybody there who knew Martha Ann and even people who couldn't make it to that really appreciate all the things that she did for this city over the years. And we all miss her very, very much and no one will make up for that.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chandler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Danaher. Now, she's walking back to her seat. But I did want to make mention of a piece of word that we've gotten just this, just the other day. We know the derelict structures piece that the fire department has worked with and folks like Ms. Danaher and of course Martha Ann Creasy was a huge person that spearheaded that. Wanted to mention to council that we did receive word that the Virginia Municipal League will be giving the city an award for the derelict structures program. So that'll be up and coming. But I thought it would be really appropriate to mention it as we were talking about-
Very good.
-the memories of Ms. Martha Ann Creasy.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our final speaker is Mr. Reginald Ruffin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'm Reginald Ruffin, 105 Stratford Street, Portsmouth. I've been there since November the 30th of 1959. And I'd like to bring a complaint on the street sweeper situation. Very seldom do I see the street sweeper come down Stratford Street. I've called numerous times and I'm told sometimes that Mr. Ruffin is the street sweeper, we have this one or we have that one, and one has broke down, one's in a shop. My concern is, I would like to see that street sweeper come down Stratford Street sometime. I have a letter here that I received in 1984. That's some time back when George El Hansbury was city manager. And I got a copy of the letter here. He informed me at the time of this letter, he said, "Mr. Fred Boeing of Public Works has informed me," he, Hansbury, "that the Cavalier Manor and Victor Manor area is currently scheduled from the 15th through the 21st of each month." Now, I look for the street sweeper to come down Stratford Street, but I don't see it. I hope that someone will look into this and see that that street sweeper comes out on Stratford Street. The other thing I would like to discuss, and this is for one of the city employees, one of your bulk truck drivers, fine young man, truck number 1223, Mr. Tommy Elliot. When he comes out, pick up bulk trash trees, I notice, I sit on my back porch and I watch these fellows, I notice that he would make sure that all of the tree limbs and branches are taken off, and he will get out of his truck, go around on the other side of the truck and pick up branches and throw them in the truck. Many don't do that. And I would like to recommend some kind of letter be put in his personnel folder, that I appreciate him coming out there doing that. And one other thing, I appreciate the city showing me where my tax dollars are going. I see you have new bulk trucks coming out there, and that's good. We had the old raggedy trucks coming out there and half of them were running, some wouldn't. But I'm glad to see that my tax dollars are well spent. The last issue, I live at Stratford and Taft, and the drainage down there, every year get worse. And when it rain, you can hardly come up Taft Drive at Stratford. You got to have a canoe down there. Well, they have this drainage pipe that runs through the property on Taft back into a drainage ditch that runs out into Chesapeake. And I understand from other times that they've been down there and looked at that, that that pipe has collapsed halfway that property. They sent a TV camera down there once and they saw that. Could the city see that somebody come out there and correct that problem so we can keep the water off of the street down there? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ruffin. I appreciate you coming in and it's interesting you kept that letter. Maybe we can get the manager here to send you a letter.
Okay.
When our street sweepers will be out there and you can put that letter with the one you have there. You had two great manager letters in your possession.
Yes.
So thank you for coming out and we'll get somebody to write on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Dr. Edmonds.
And from there, Mr. Ruffin, I would hope that we have listened very carefully to what he has said and take some type of action that we can come back and let him know what has been done.
Absolutely.